Welcome, everybody. We'll call it a order the Wednesday, October 23, 2024, Cedarburg School Board meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg as well as to the News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin the evening with recognitions, and there we have state proclamations.
Excuse me, we have a couple of them this evening. We're going back to September. The week of September 8th through the 14th was Arts and Education Week. The weeks of October 14th, well, the week of October 14th through the 18th was National School Lunch Week. The week of October 14th through the 20th was Wisconsin Science Week. And then for the month of October, it's Keeping Kids Safe Online Month, Gifted Education Month, and National Farm to School Month. And then we have one proclamation for November 4th through the 8th, and that is the HOSA Future Health Professionals Week. And then all proclamations are always available on the district's board docs web page. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Consent Agenda, Dr. Clark.
All right. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on September 18th, 2024, the special school board meeting on October 9th, 2024, the school board budget hearing on October 21st, 2024, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transactions, and the personnel report. Mr. Tony DeRosa, Director of Human Resources, is here to provide an overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, everybody. As you can see on the report, no separation or hiring for the professional employees, but we do have a number of classified support staff that are no longer employed by the district and hired by the district and some internal transfers. Only have one posting on weekend right now for support staff members, so as we get to the end of October, feeling good about our staffing levels.
Fantastic. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion?
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, superintendent report.
All right. Oh, thank you. This evening, we have Principal Dan Reiner and a team from Webster Middle School here to share with us the learning experiences students receive when they participate in the eighth grade Camp Minikani trip.
So I'm going to turn it over to Dan and his team.
Good evening. I'd like to express my gratitude to the board, Dr. Clark, for allowing Webster to showcase one of our amazing programs, our eighth grade Camp Minikani experience. Present with me tonight are Mrs. Ward, Mrs. Rogan, and Mrs. Zarek, and students Dayton, Elijah, Ella, and Mackenzie. They'll be sharing their camp histories and experiences to shed some light on this amazing program.
Again, we'd like to show you a highlight reel from this year's trip.
Five, four, three, two, one.
brings. You can see our four things here. First of all, Minikani is a really longstanding tradition. It's been dating back to 1975. This was our 48th time out there this year. So I know in the community, I meet people still that have gone to Camp Minikani, and they reflect on how much fun they had. It is a unique and meaningful outdoor experience. Students have an opportunity to learn two days outside and just immerse themselves in all of the different environments. We really promote teamwork and group decision-making skills. These kids are put into groups randomly, and they have to get along with this group throughout the time that we're there, and we develop teamwork skills throughout. And finally, just teacher-student rapport, building relationships at the very beginning of the year, not only with teachers, students, but also with kids themselves.
Could I just ask anyone speaking, could you speak into the mic? I'm just having a bit of a hard time hearing. Thank you. That's okay.
Okay. I'm Dawn Zarek. I'm here to just talk about the classes that we offer. We have a wetland exploration and fire building class. We have yard games, which is taught through the math teachers. We have a GPS scavenger hunt, creative storytelling, and some more making. They also do some tie dyeing of T-shirts. There's archery, ropes and rock climbing, water rockets, and canoeing.
So during the wetland and fire building class, we learned about the importance of carefully evaluating nonliving and living wetland wildlife and building small campfires to apply all that we know about the science of fire building. During yard games, we mainly focused on hypotheses, collecting data, analyzing data, and drawing conclusions based on exact results collected. Then we observed the data and answered questions that were asked. My favorite game that we played was cornhole. In social studies, we did a scavenger hunt exploring around camp using Global Positioning System, GPS. My favorite part of this activity was being challenged to find the correct cars and coordinates and having the reward to take fun and funny pictures with our group. Thank you for having me today.
One of the activities we do is create fun stories with the group. This is a great way to get creative and use your imagination. This activity helps students create stronger bonds and friendships. One of my favorite activities was the tie dyeing. Students are able to interact with other students while putting their creativity to the test. There were many different ways to tie dye, and no matter what you picked, the outcome would always look good. Another one of my favorite activities was archery. We were taught proper etiquette and technique when we were on the range. I believe that most students enjoyed learning their new skills. Thank you for having me.
One of the activities we did was the ropes and rock climbing. This activity helped students learn how to communicate with each other and with confidence in front of their peers. It also helped them learn safety by communicating with the operators and their classmates. My favorite part was the ropes course and learning how to use the equipment. Another activity we did was the water rockets. This was my personal favorite. It helped us learn how to work with others, even if you didn't know them, and brainstorm ideas. Also, it helped with problem solving, especially when me and my partner had multiple failed attempts, but then until we succeeded. Next is canoeing, and this station was really fun but also challenging. You had to cooperate with the person in the canoe with you, and you had to rely on them to go in the right direction and not to collide with other canoes.
During the evening, we got to choose to do board games, go to the dance. I chose to go to the dance and had a good time with my friends. During camp, we learned many skills. Some of the skills we learned were leadership, teamwork and collaboration, communication, conflict resolution, problem-solving and critical thinking, and environmental awareness. Camp taught me many things, but I enjoyed doing activities that we normally don't do at school. And now we have a few brief clips of some other students at camp.
Camp meant to me perseverance. Some of the activities at camp might not be your cup of joe, but you've got to keep persevering because none of the activities at camp are impossible.
Camp means to me courage. Sometimes you have to step out of your comfort zone and try new things.
Camp Minikani means to me the following the Webster Way through activities and entertainment.
I will open this up to any questions you might have for the students.
I've got a question. So Camp Minikani looks very similar to when I went there with my school, you know, a few decades ago, but there are a couple of new activities, and I'm curious about the water rocket. What's that?
So during that station, we had these like plastic bottles, and you had to put like cardboard fins on them, and then you had to put like air pressure in them and then release them, and they like shot up in the air. And there was also like a contest you could do to see who could get theirs the furthest. It was like really fun. That was like my favorite.
Yeah. I think you're my favorite too. Thanks.
I had a question. First of all, thank you so much for the students coming to present and was so impressed by everything that you've shared. I had a question more for Dan and Nicole. Is this still an overnight experience?
This is not overnight.
It's not. When did it stop being an overnight?
Right before COVID.
Okay. Is there a reason why?
How we changed how we did things overnight.
Okay.
I think the main driver of this, you know, when you surveyed students, they prefer to go home instead of overnight. That was kind of one of those findings that we had in the first year of COVID.
Okay. I would, I don't know, I would offer, thinking about that a bit more, I just think that there's something very unique and developmental about an eighth grader, middle schooler getting to do an overnight experience, especially since not every family has the means or ability to do any other type of summer camp all the time, or there's something about like growing up and going into that eighth grade year that I think might be valuable to students. And I know I've heard some feedback from people in the community asking that it be overnight, but thank you.
One of the things I'd like to know is how many canoes ended up going in circles and how many tipped over?
So actually, I don't think any of them tipped over, especially like in my group, no one really like tipped over. Nobody, I mean, nobody really collided like that much, that much. Yeah, it was like, it was pretty fun. Some of us like splash water with each other and, you know, just have fun, but like there is, I don't think at least there is any tips of the canoes.
That's good.
No, yeah, very safe.
Maybe you can, you could add bumper canoes next to it.
Well, you do it.
I'm curious if the students that spoke today preferred, I guess you wouldn't have had the experience of being an overnight, you had the experience of being two different days. Was that something that you liked and you liked that setup that worked well for your families and yourselves?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks again for everyone for, the presentation is fantastic. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In your board package are the district's, the district's school safety drills for all five of our schools. Act 143 requires that this information is provided to the school board prior to January 1st of each school year. Mr. Rick Radke is present to answer any questions if you have any. All right. Doesn't look like there's any questions. You're off the hook.
I have one question.
You're not off the hook.
Hold on, I'm logged in now. Yeah, give me a sec.
I noticed Webster had included the number of, let's see, maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing. No, the number of students that were, you know, included and then absent, and I just thought that's really helpful to know, like, because I think it's very important that we do it on, you know, school days, that as many students are in attendance as possible. So I think that's just a helpful piece of information. I only noticed it in Webster's, so.
Yeah, I don't think that's a requirement of all schools that enter that information, but we certainly can talk as a group and make a decision to do that.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, no, thank you.
One thing that I have actually discussed with Dr. Clark before is if regular or annual reunification drills could be held for each of the schools, where it's not just administrators, but it's also teachers and staff focusing on that period of time of, okay, the situation's under control, you know, how do we remove the kids from the building? How do we make sure they get to a space safe place? And then how do we handle pickups afterwards? Because, you know, while we do focus a lot on what to do in case of an event, I know we're going to have a lot of scared parents and community members, and so I definitely would like to see an effort done to at least do those things annually for each building so that, you know, we have an idea of, you know, what is it going to take to get four kindergarten classrooms however far away in one group safely, you know, those types of logistics.
Yeah, I agree. And Dr. Clark and I have spoken about that. We are starting to do tabletop exercises in our DLC meetings, and that will only continue to escalate as far as the amount of training and practicing that we do, but it is something that this year we will practice.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome. And just as a side note, we did spend, we had a 40-minute tabletop exercise today with the CPD. So the chief was there and four officers and kind of just walking through what would we do in a, in a scenario, so.
Fantastic. Hopefully, we never need to use it, but it's always better to be prepared.
Yeah, 100%.
Just something I noted reviewing them, I appreciated the level of detail that went into each of the reports, and it sounds like, I just wanted to confirm that at the elementary level that there is a plan in place, kind of maybe from a learning, how it happened for students that aren't just in the classroom, like something like that went excellently, but, you know, students could be at different places on the school grounds that isn't necessarily in the classroom and that that was figured out.
Yeah, that is something that during our safety summit, when the buildings do their practicing of ALICE and other safety drills, they do have a lot of group conversation about those type of scenarios. And I do, and this year during that drill time, it was, I did make it clear, I wanted every building to practice a scenario, an ALICE-type scenario in a group setting, IMC, cafeteria, something like that, because you're right, during a school day, everybody is scattered all throughout the building, so we have to be prepared wherever we are.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Does that include like maybe if there's a recess or something like, kids are outside, like do they know what to do?
Yeah, we do have policies that, that are directed towards those situations. We do have loudspeakers on the outside of the building, so the inside of the building can communicate with recess and things like that and with the teachers through radios. And we do have procedures on if something were to happen in the building and a group is outside, where do they go? Yes, we have talked about that. Yep.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent report.
Yep.
All right. Next, we have public comment. I didn't see anyone signed up, but is there anyone present who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to recommendations. Dr. Clark?
All right. This evening, we have 11 recommendations, and so here we go. The first recommendation is for the board to approve the adoption of the 2024-25 original budget as presented. The budget was discussed at this past Monday's budget hearing. Ms. Kim Zabel, Director of Business Services, is available to answer questions.
I don't have anything to add other than what we talked about on Monday, but if you do have questions, I'll take them at this time.
Do you have any questions?
I do. First, I'll say thank you for patience for board members. I, I'm going to do my best here. I wasn't at the board hearing on Monday, so things that I'm bringing up may very well have been discussed, so apologies, or no, I'm working on not apologizing. Thank you for your patience as I ask those questions. So when we're looking at the proposed budget, it includes, as of now, a proposed, excuse me, the retention bonuses are removed for the 2024-2025 year in order to get to that balanced budget, in addition to other things, but is that an accurate statement?
The retention bonuses are not in the 24-25.
Okay. And I guess from my perspective, I would still like to see some of that retention bonus in our 2024-2025 budget, proposed budget. And I'd like to ask our board president, is it appropriate to continue discussing this right now with my questions with Kim or to potentially make a motion at item A?
Well, we've already gone through a lot of those issues at the PNF meetings and at the hearing. Are you talking about like re, kind of rehashing what we've already gone through?
No, I fully understand the majority of perspectives, and I am stating that as I wasn't present on Monday, which is no, no board member's fault, my preference would be to see a portion of our budget, not the entirety, but a portion reallocated to our retention bonuses for the next year. I'm not asking to rehash everything at all. So that's kind of where my question is. I'd like to follow our process. I'd like to be respectful of the time that was taken on Monday.
Well, I guess to answer your question, I've never in my entire career on the school board had some board member at the last minute bring a change to the, a proposed change to the budget. So I'm not exactly sure how that would work. That's something that would be kind of ironed out, I think, in the PNF meetings and, and then it discussed at the hearing, and it wasn't, I don't even recall if we discussed that at the hearing. So I don't, it doesn't sound appropriate to me because we've had the public hearing already, but I'm not going to, you know, prevent you from making a motion if you want to make a motion.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I was looking for the whether you, whether it would be prevented as a motion or not. Thank you. That's it, Kim. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kim?
Kim, for the, oh, excuse me. Budget hearing, so, no, we had a, I thought it was, everything for me was covered at the budget hearing. It was quite a detailed presentation, so.
And I recognize it was your first meeting or budget presentation, and you did an outstanding job. You were very thorough. Thank you for that.
Kim, would you mind again, board members, if this was covered on Monday? Thank you for your patience, but for the retention bonuses, would you mind just giving an overview of what those percentages were last year for allocation for teachers, admin, and that exempt support staff for me?
Sure. So annually, we pay out about 400, we had paid out about $400,000 in retention bonuses last year, last year, and this could change every year. Retention bonus is based on a number of things. I'm not an expert in that. Tony's here if you do have questions on what it's based on or how much it is or who gets what, but of course, that can alter. It is a retention bonus of people coming in. But out of the 400,000 last year, admin was budgeted for 65,000 or 17%. Exempt support staff, 10,000 or 3%. And teachers, 310,000, 300 to 310,000 or 81%.
So for the teachers last year, it was 81%, 3% for our admin, and what was that last number again? Or did I, I feel like I got that a bit.
3% for exempt support staff.
Thank you.
17% for admin.
Thank you.
That adds up to 101, so.
That's just, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that was a test. So.
Somewhere around those lines.
Yeah, these are, so, yeah.
Okay. I, again, I appreciate you sharing that information. I wouldn't bring things up if I felt they were last minute, and I would have been here on Monday were it possible for me to be here, but thank you for answering those questions. Sure.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, then I would take the motion to approve the 2024-25 budget.
I'll make a motion to, for the budget to reallocate $100,000 from our general fund to retention bonuses for the 2024-2025 school year.
I will second that motion.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Connie, I'm curious if you have any ideas as to where that money would come from then to balance the budget?
Sure. So for right now, I think, I'm sorry, let me take a step back. I recognize that there's a great deal of importance placed on our general fund and that, or our general fund, Fund 46. I believe that our district can go forward to 400 rather than 500 in this year ahead, and my hope is that there's additional discussion with our board to advocate for funding at the state level, and I'll leave it at that in the interest of time.
All right.
So I would just clarify that there's the general fund, and then there's Fund 46, and there's two separate funds, and I didn't want anyone to be confused by that.
Correct. Thank you for that.
So Fund 46 is like the long-term capital improvement trust, and the district uses that, and it has to be in there a certain number of years, and then it's pulled out after a certain number of years, and that's used for major like capital improvements such as roofs, HVAC, switches, that type of thing, and that's really the district like saving for a rainy day, and those funds are, you know, needed to keep our buildings safe, usable, that type of thing. So that's why we, many of us on the board wanted at least a $500,000 investment into Fund 46, which we have in this year's budget.
Yeah, and I would add that we covered this in prior PNF Personnel Finance Committee meetings. I'm not sure if you were at the last one, Connie, but we've, this has been something that we've been discussing over the past several months, and I feel like it's already kind of been discussed. We presented the budget to the, to the public for hearing on Monday, and I, I just think it's something that we've decided not to do, so I wouldn't support it, but.
I guess I have to respectfully disagree. Given public response to the knowledge that retention bonuses were eliminated from the budget in order to balance or assist with balancing this budget, I don't think removing $100,000 from the deposit into Fund 46 is a bad idea, especially when you're looking at extending goodwill to your faculty and staff and showing them that you value their worth, especially after negotiations broke down the way they did and the original over 4% CPI was reduced to 3%. And the possibility that even though to teacher comp plan was put back in, there was a point in time where that as well was removed. And if we want to make sure we stay competitive in terms of state report card numbers, I don't think moving $100,000 out of the deposit to Fund 46 is really going to break us considering the needs of the district as far as equipment and building far outweigh any small amounts that we could squirrel into Fund 46.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So how many ayes were there? Three or two? Two, okay, so that motion fails. Five to two. And I think I was looking to entertain a motion to approve the budget. If anyone has such a motion?
I've motioned to approve the adoption of the 2024-25 original budget as presented. I was, oh, go ahead. I will second that motion.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. So I will be, as I did back in June, voting against this budget. I am all in favor of a balanced budget, as that is what any responsible school district is looking towards. However, I very strongly disagree with how that balance, or that budget was balanced. We do have a balanced budget despite the state legislature, not because of the state legislature. Money that was cut over 400,000 to retention bonuses. You have classes being reduced, class sizes being increased, not being able to cover mental health support at the middle school, among other various things. I do think we could have reached a balanced budget under a much better scenario. I do know that had the vote not been, I believe it was five to two, if I'm not mistaken, on Amplify, we could have saved another $150,000 on that over $600,000 curriculum, but unfortunately, the majority of the board was not in favor for that. So I just want the community to be aware that we did have other we did have other ways to balance this budget. But obviously, by being in the minority, the other options were not adequately weighed.
I have, yeah, I just had some questions, maybe Dr. Clark or someone, staff member in attendance here. So would you say that there's a lack of mental health support at Webster? I'm assuming that this is referring to the counselor position that was kind of like a temporary position with using some of the SRF funds at Webster? Would you describe there being a lack of mental health support at the middle school?
I think we have the ability to meet the needs for our students with the resources that we have. And when you talk mental health, I mean, that's a, that's a hard one to, to say you're going to perfectly meet everybody's need. But yeah.
But that, from, it was my understanding from talking with Ben when he was here that if some SRF funds were used for a position that was kind of always known that that was going to be.
Yes.
There for that number of years. And then when the SRF funds retired, that, that wasn't like something sprung at the last second or.
Correct.
Oh, we need to balance the budget. We're firing somebody. That wasn't, it was kind of planned all along to go that way?
Correct. That second counselor position was paid for using SRF funds.
Okay. And then for anyone who wasn't here at the budget meeting on Monday, you described this. Could you describe a little bit more about kind of like the right sizing, the elementary classrooms based on the current enrollment that was done?
Sure. Yes. So we did, the number of elementary teachers was reduced by three. There were, one teacher was reduced at Parkview and two teachers were reduced at Thorson. And the reason for that had to do with class enrollment, class size. And so last year, fifth grade was a four-section class. This year, kindergarten is just a three-section class. So that's why, where one went. Over at Thorson, same thing happened. Four-section, fifth grade kindergarten is now three sections there. The other change was at Park, at Thorson, first and second grade. In kindergarten and first grade, our class size guidelines are 18 to 24. Second through fifth grade, it is 22 students to 28. And so when we, when the, the first grade class moved up to second grade, we were able to go down to three and still be with, three classes and still be within the guidelines.
Doesn't sound like a budget thing.
That would have been done regardless of where we were at, just as we always look to, to make sure that we have the right number of students in.
Yeah. And then just to be, just to reiterate as well, I don't think there were any, there was any pay cut. There was a, I think through our careful budgeting, which was a challenge in this economy, we're able to offer the educators a four and a half percent pay increase, which I think in this economy was, is pretty good when you compare to what, actually it's phenomenal when compared to what, what people in the private sector are seeing. So I, I appreciate the work that you've done on this, Kim. And again, the, the Personal Finance Committee and your team, I think we did a, a good job of balancing the many challenges and concerns that we have.
And I guess I'd like to add to that, to kind of piggyback to what Davis said. I mean, we do recognize that these last two years have been challenging with the inflation and so forth. And the CPI, really, the last two years have been much higher than it has been in prior years. And we had discussed, I don't know if you'd have the numbers in front of you, of if we had given the retention bonus, we would have had to reduce the increase like, you know, wouldn't have been on average 4% or 4.1. It would have been lower. But then the teachers still would have gotten their retention bonus. But this way, they're getting it in their salary that will continue every year to increase with CPI. So there was discussion. We weren't just saying, we don't want to pay the retention bonus. It's just how can, in what avenue can we put as much money as we can to compensation? And again, we, everyone is earning, I believe, more money this year than they did last year.
I just want to add on to that, in addition to what Laura and Dave have said. As far as the Fund 46, we've had a lot of discussion about that at the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting level. A $500,000 deposit is what we've been striving to put in, but that alone is not going to sustain what we need going forward. And so I think it's going to be short-sighted to pull money out of that, to put into, you know, these other areas when, when we actually are providing what I feel to be a fair compensation in this economy. And so I just don't think it's fiscally responsible to not fund that fully at, at the 500,000. I had another thought, but I've lost it at the moment.
Kind of as a response, I just want to make sure that, you know, taxpayers understand where the money is coming from and where the money is going. We are right sizing, reducing the number of teachers, reducing, making the choice to reduce the number of mental health providers, counselors, psychologists, whatnot at the middle school from two to one. Those are decisions that are being made to balance budgets. You know, money could have been set aside, you know, yes, that was SRF funding originally, but if importance was placed on taking care of the mental health of our middle schoolers, that position would have been provided for. In the future, as we see increases in enrollment due to the development in the community, we are most likely going to have to expand the number of classes or increase class sizes. That money is going to have to come from somewhere. And right now, our hands are tied by the legislature with only a $325 increase per pupil per year. And I know everybody's feeling the bite of inflation. Our building projects aren't going to get any cheaper. They get more expensive as the days go by, as you're trying to buy supplies and you're trying to hire people to take on those projects. So I just want to make sure the community is aware that they need to be advocating for public school funding because there are no wants to cut from this budget anymore. We will be cutting things we need next year because we don't have enough revenue coming in to cover things adequately now. So keep that in mind because this is, this is only going to get more difficult.
I remembered what I was going to add on to my previous statement. There's a lot of costs that have increased that we don't have control over. Transportation that we have to provide. We don't have a lot of control over what that cost is going to be. Utilities, like there have been a lot of things in our budget that have gone up that, you know, we have to cover. And so it's not just as simple as we want to provide more to retention bonuses. I think everyone at those PNF committee meetings really felt the same way, that we wanted to be able to provide that, but we still have to be physically, fiscally responsible and live within our means. So I think we've done the best that we can putting this budget together. And I, I hope you can join us at those meetings, Connie, throughout the year and see everything that we've put into it.
I appreciate hearing from everyone at this table. I, I think that last statement of saying you would hope I would be there. I think this particular board has individuals that attend meetings to an exemplary degree when they're not on those committees and they don't even serve as alternates. My attendance is very good. I pay attention to what each of you do in your committees. So I think it's unfair to make a statement to kind of close out by saying, I hope that you join. I greatly appreciate when I have the opportunity to share my thoughts at meetings where I'm not a member and I'm not an alternate, but that doesn't always happen at our meetings. So I would never pull a number just out of the hat. I could not be here on Monday. I made that known. I asked my questions to the degree that I could. I took into consideration the conversations that have been had at every PNF meeting, every board meeting, and a number that I felt was reasonable. I wouldn't just pull it out for no reason. That motion failed and I can accept that. My vote in June was not to accept the budget as it was proposed then. And again, I would just reiterate that from my perspective, we have board members at the table who show up even though they're not on those committees, they're not alternates because they care about the input of one another. I care about your input and your ideas. Laura, yours as well. Elizabeth, yours. Kate, yours. Dave, Dr. Silvaji, sorry. I care about each of your input. So I do plan to continue going to every single committee meeting that I can, even when I'm not a member and I'm not an alternate. That is my, that is my viewpoint and the way I can best serve our community.
Okay. So we're getting a little off track.
And in response, Kate, as I'm only allowed to serve on Personnel and Finance in terms of being able to give my opinion, I'm not allowed to do that on negotiations. I don't agree with how we did things, but I am in the minority and I recognize that.
What do you mean, you weren't able to give your opinion in negotiations?
I have to act as I'm directed by the board as chair of the negotiations committee.
Okay. But you were able to participate, give your, your viewpoints and at the meetings, correct? Okay. Any more discussion? All right. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries, five to two. Next, Dr. Clark.
All right. Second recommendation is for the board to approve the 2024, 25 tax levy of $25,947,129, which is comprised of a tax for the general and non-referendum funds in the amount of $20,322,129, a tax for referendum approved debt retirement in the amount of $5,340,000, and a tax for the community service fund of $285,000. The proposed tax levy rate for 2024, 25 is $6.50, which is the same rate that was set in 2022, 23, and 2023, 24.
This was explained in some detail during the budget hearing on Monday. Do I have a motion to approve the tax levy certification?
I will make that motion. I will second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? None. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Is it unanimous?
All right. The third recommendation is for the board to approve the 2025 partially self-funded health insurance plan design option as presented. The 2025 health insurance renewal will come with a 5% increase and is included in the 2024, 25 original budget.
This was gone over in detail in the PNF.
Correct. This was discussed at PNF. At the time, we didn't have what the increased percentage was going to be. We do now have that set at 5%.
Just for people who didn't attend that or, yeah, for anyone who didn't attend that, could you just give a brief overview of what the partially self-funded plan looks like, what changes would be? Just describe that a little bit more for us.
Sure. So the district has been in what's called a partial, a fully insured plan with United Healthcare for the past two years. And our fully insured renewal came in at 36.3%, which is very much above what was budgeted, about $1 million over what was budgeted. So at that point, administration and our health insurance broker, USI, began exploring our options on what we could do to lower that renewal. We explored options of going back to United Healthcare and renegotiating, going out to other fully insured plans to see what they offered, as well as exploring the option of going to self-funded plan. The self-funded plan is a different kind of model where we don't just pay an insurance company to insure all of our employees and their dependents. Instead, we pay a third-party administrator, UMR, to administer our health insurance so that on the, to the employee, it looks the same and it, it has the same interaction as an insurance network. We don't get in the business of insurance. But then on the back end of that, instead of just paying for the, the district's employees to have an insured plan for a year, we pay the claims. So what that means is that in a year, so we become our own insurance company, essentially. And on top of our insurance, we buy insurance on our insurance called stop-loss insurance to make sure that our risk is mitigated. However, it does come with some risk because in a year where our employees' claims are less than what the actuary expects, you know, we don't pay out as much and we can put money into a, a health insurance fund balance. But in a year where our employees' claims end up being more than what the actuary predicts, we would have to pay that out. We're on the hook for that. And so that's where then it would be a deficit, it would be a deficit in that fund balance for health insurance and we would go into the general fund, fund balance to pay those claims. One reason that we could explore this option is because we have a healthy fund balance at 26%. So, and we did highlight that the other night. And so I do thank the board for being fiscally responsible in that sense. The fact that we could make this decision and save not only the district but the employees a very large sum of money this next year was really impactful. The change to self-insurance now, instead of being a 36% renewal, will be a 5% renewal, which for a family is $6.47 per cha, per paycheck more, or $155.23 per year more. So I think that's pretty palatable as I think about my family, and much better than the alternative fully insured renewal. So it does require some additional administrative work, some additional risk. But because we're in the position that we are in, we, the board felt as if, and your approval of this today will be your, your full approval of it, we can take that risk and go ahead and jump into a self-insurance program. And the reason we've gone through this so much is because this is a, a very long-term decision. It's not just a year. It's a, it's a decision we're making for three or five years as even some board members come and go. We want to make sure that we're making this decision for a long period of time and is in the best interest of the Cedarburg School District for, for a while.
And to that point, there were a number of Personnel Finance Committee meetings and a lot of discussion and thought and work went into this. And you've got the, the insurance broker and the, the administrator and the actuaries. And the numbers looked very good. So certainly not, and there is a little bit of, the risk, the risk that will be, end up, get worse off is not very high.
Right. It's, it's, yeah, it actually ended up being lower than what we would have just paid outright fully insured. So even at the worst possible case scenario, so.
And employees will be able to retain their doctors, correct? That nothing's changed?
Right. Yes. And, and that's the best part. That's what we heard from employees, the most important thing, especially with the number of changes that have happened in the, in the past couple of years. And we talked about this at the committee level and at the special meeting too, was that the employees had said that the disruption to their network was not favorable, obviously, now that they've settled with their new doctors. And so what USI advised and what we felt was appropriate was to essentially copy the same United Healthcare plan. United Healthcare and UMR are sister companies. And so we're on, Tony and I are on meetings already this week and they're talking to each other and telling each other about the plans. And so that's been super helpful as well, just to make sure the continuity of care is continued.
Thank you. Kim, I just, the things that I hear is that the staff doesn't want the network, you know, changed and don't want a huge spike in premiums. So I'm so thankful that this has been an option for the district, district.
Yep.
To keep that, the increase relatively flat and then also stay, keeping the same network. And really, as you said, this is possible because of how the district has budgeted over the years and to have that healthy fund balance. And had the district not had that healthy fund balance, we would potentially be looking at, what was it, a 30, 25, 30%?
Yeah, they're not directly related, but it would have been a, a more difficult decision to make, right?
If this would, would have been an option to do this partially self-funded.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, would have, but it would have meant, it would have been a very different scenario. So the fact that we have $10 million in fund balance and we're taking a million and a half risk, you know, if worst-case scenario, we'd have to go into the fund balance. We have that, just like at home, right? Worst-case scenario, you have to go into fund balance. You can do that and you will, and things will look different next year, but you will figure it out then. So.
Kim? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have a question?
Oh, no. I was going to entertain a motion, but.
Sure. I just had, I just, one last thing here. I just appreciate you taking time. This, this particular item took up the majority of our one-on-one meeting right when you started. And it's, I think for anyone that has had to go from a change in insurance and.
And it's, I think for anyone that has had to go from a change in insurance and have unforeseen consequences from that, it can be incredibly frightening and really hard on morale and kind of keeping things going for students. So, it is extra work for the administration, and I recognize that. I appreciate the expertise that you're bringing to that. And again, the PNF Committee, those are meetings I sat in on and valued everyone's input. So, thank you for your kind of willingness to jump, because it is a jump. So, thank you. Yeah, it is a jump, and it'll be a journey as we go throughout the next six months. So, and especially as the Board hears feedback on how it's being perceived by people, let us know, and we can give that feedback to PNF as we go throughout the next year as well, and make sure that we pay attention and continue to make changes where necessary.
Yeah, for sure. Let us know. There shouldn't be any feedback on the service. It should be exactly.
Hopefully, yeah, right. But if there is something that, you know, isn't foreseen, I want to know about it.
Well, and as someone who was happy to see UMR, my educational institution did the same thing, where we went from United Healthcare to UMR. And I will say, I know I and others I've spoken with have been happy with the responsiveness of UMR. So I'm hoping that we're going to see a lot of happy employees, that, you know, we were able to keep them in their networks and that they might actually be receiving better service under this plan. That would be great.
I motion to approve the 2025 partially self-funded plan design option as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? None? We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
All right. The next recommendation is for the Board to approve the part-time custodial wage increases as presented. The part-time custodians were not included in the wage increases approved earlier this year. The increase is approximately 4.12% or $6,500, which would be paid retroactively to July 1st, 2024, and is covered by the current B&amp;G budget. This recommendation has been forwarded to the full Board by the Personnel and Finance Committee. Mr. Tony DeRosa is available to answer questions.
I'll entertain a motion. Are there no questions?
If there are no questions, I would make a motion to approve the part-time custodian wage increase.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or is there any questions?
Thank you for keeping an eye on this so that these individuals have that 4.12 increase.
All right. Good motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next recommendation is for the Board to approve the Global Scholars Extended Travel to Ireland, Scotland, and England in June of 2026 as presented. This recommendation has been forwarded to the full Board by the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Ally Rudes, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, is available to answer questions.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve the Global Scholars Extended Travel to Ireland, Scotland, and England in June 2026 as presented. I will second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion or are there any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to Mr. Elmaker for continually putting these programs together. I am very jealous of the Global Scholars, and if you need any chaperones, I'm available.
Yes.
All right. Good motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is also an Ally one, and that is for the Board to approve Personal Finance as a new course at Cedarburg, at Cedarburg High School. The course helps CSD meet the requirements of Wisconsin Act 60, which requires that all students in the class of 2028 and beyond attain a half credit of personal finance literacy in order to graduate. This, sorry. Can't turn on the page. Excuse me. Sorry. This recommendation has been forwarded to the full Board by the Curriculum Committee.
All right. There are no questions. I would take a motion.
I just wanted to make a point. So, real quick, just so the public knows, there was work being done in various different classes on personal finance. It was kind of bits and pieces here and there, so those things were being covered. The difference is, is now there is a set class for personal finance that focuses on it as a whole, correct?
There will be a set class that all students do have to go through and is aligned with state expectations. Yes. Good. So it's not a new thing. We have been covering these things, but it's a new course.
Yeah, and, because the, to that end, the district has had a personal finance requirement. In that requirement, though, students were able to take economics and a couple of different other courses, which teach personal finance, but some other things. This state requirement does not allow that to occur. So in econ, anything with an econ class doesn't count for it. And so, that's why we needed to specifically identify a course and go that. And the district has offered a college personal finance course, which is a dual-credit class. That will still be out there and kids still have that opportunity to take it. But since this has become a required course, I felt that this was an appropriate one to add. So, yeah.
Good. Thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion. We don't have one, do we?
No. I would make a motion to approve the new CHS course on personal finance.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
All right. The next recommendation is for the Board to approve the DPI GED Option Number Two Program for Implementation at CHS as Presented. This program is an alternative education program for students who are at least 17 years old and at risk of not graduating. Currently, a student in this position would go to the Ozaki Community High School at a cost of about $10,000 to the district. By offering the GEDO II program at CHS, we would not have to send a student to OCHS. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full Board by the Curriculum Committee.
If there are no questions, I'll take a motion on it.
A motion.
I will second.
The motion is to approve the.
Excuse me. Yes, correct.
GED Option Number Two, right?
Correct.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is a package deal coming from the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee has forwarded the 25 policy updates that you have in your packet. We are seeking a recommendation for the Board to approve these updates.
Again, they went through the Policy Committee. We had our, our Neola rep there, and it was pretty smooth, I think. Nothing, yeah, it was, it's pretty routine. Take a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the policy updates.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. So there's a few, a few policies that had verbiage changes, and I did touch base with Dr. Clark a bit about these. And this particular policy committee meeting, I don't, I don't believe there's any recording of it or anything like that. So, if we're just going back real quick, I'm curious if our committee members on the policy, or our Board members that are on the policy committee, recall whether policy 0164 for meetings, specifically that virtual component, if that was added with, the rationale for adding that. And then, there were two other policies that I had some residents ask about. One was the, was PO5330, Administration of Medication and Emergency Care. And I believe that's the one that talks about the FDA and also essential oils. So I'm wondering if there was conversation about that one. And then, excuse me, there was four. The third one being food services, the language change from, I believe it's medical conditions to disabilities. It was, it's quite a long paragraph one. And then, the one regarding search, where is it? You'd think I could find it easily here.
5771.
What is it? Oh, thank you. It's right there. 5771. Just a question about the language change from, I believe it's gender to sex. So those were, you know, pretty much everything else looks like Neola updates to me. Those were the ones where I had questions either from the community or from myself. So I would just, if Board members that are on that committee recall discussion, it would be helpful to understand that prior to my vote, voting yea or nay on the, the motion as presented.
Yeah, I don't recall. I do remember some conversation about the medical, or administration of. Medical, yeah, but I, and I, I don't know, I don't recall, and I guess I don't have a good memory of anything. I remember talking about that one. I don't, I don't recall the others.
So I have, my concerns mirror Connie's on those regards, especially the 5330, 5771, but also 5505, the academic honesty. While AI and NLP were outlined, they forgot LLM, Large Language Models, which is also part of that trilogy. So my request would be to add LLM everywhere that AI and NLP are listed. So we're covering all of our bases. Essentially, you can't have AI without LLM. That's largely the writing or human speech aspect of AI. And if we're going to have an academic honesty policy, we need to include that. But my concerns were also the change of turn from gender to sex. And then, knowing that a lot of my people's traditional medicines are not FDA-approved, you know, it would make it difficult for me to treat my child at school, since a lot of these things, they're not allowed to keep on themselves. I think unnecessarily, you know, banning these things could, could bring lawsuit. I mean, I see the line, "Will require the written instruction of a practitioner and the written consent of a parent." I think if you leave that in, those things can still be administered by district staff if there's a liability waiver that is signed. So I don't understand, you know, and obviously, that meeting was not recorded, so the reasoning from the Neola rep, you know, is only known to those who were at the meeting.
Yeah, I would say on that one, because we did have, we did have discussion with our nurse and with some of our administrators on that prior to the meeting I did. And I think the concern with, with self-administering from any student is we're not really sure what's, what's going on. None of that precludes a health plan, which, which then directs what's, what's going on there. So, again, that's just, the, the feedback that I have in terms of that, not positive or negative in it, just, just the statements from what was discussed with the principals in terms of the, or the nurse in terms of the essential oils. And again, it had more to do with self-administering and having kids going or carrying things that, you know, people just don't know what they are.
And, yeah, the, the statement there basically states substances that are not FDA-approved, i.e. natural products, food supplements, will not be administered by district staff. So students would be, wouldn't be allowed to have them, and district staff couldn't administer them. However, previously, it was that substances that are not FDA-approved, i.e. natural products, food supplements, will require the written instruction of a practitioner and the written consent of the parent. So, you know, we're not allowing students to carry it, and we're not allowing staff to give it. So that, that is, you know, there's a disconnect there, unfortunately, I think.
Yeah. And again, I think the challenge, and I'll just speak as an employee, I mean, you know, anytime you're doing anything medical to a student, that's always a little, little interesting. That's not to say we don't, right? I mean, when you think about students that have diabetes and the different things. So, again, not insurmountable, just.
So I think that touched base on one of the policies. And just so that we're clear, there's no other recollection of the other ones that I brought up. Is that accurate at this point in time?
Well, we went through every individual policy, and those policies are present in Word docs for anyone who wants to look through them and updates. There are, any additions are in green. There's words that are red that are struck out. So if you had like a specific question on a policy, you know, it could be discussed here. The ideal place to discuss it is in the Policy Committee meeting, but we can absolutely discuss it here if you had a specific question. But like rattling off like 10 different policies that none of us knows, like has it go, you would say a four-digit number and know off the top of our head which one that is? That's not that conducive to having a conversation about it. So maybe go one by one, or what are your questions?
Sure. Sure. So I felt I was clear. Again, thank you for your patience if that wasn't the case.
Well, let's ask, do you have a memory of any of these specific, like, I, she asked if we, if any, if any members remembered anything. I don't really remember specifics. I'm not sure if you do. I don't remember who was even there. But I did, something did pop up though, and in my mind was Kate's question about LLM. Because I had, remember, we were, we were looking at the, the artificial intelligence stuff, and there, it looks like, it sounded like there was some desire to allow certain, like, to not, not penalize, like, like, if you're using spell check, that mixture, that didn't fall into it. So what do you think about this LLM? Do you know what that is?
That, that's not a term that I've, I've heard before, so I'll just.
Yeah, so LLM, any, anything that you're using AI-wise to write, say you're asking it to help you write a letter, you're asking it to help you write a paper. The large language model is the culmination of all of the data that it's pulling from. So all of the billions and billions of documents that go into the functioning of AI come through an LLM. So to not cover an LLM in the language, you are leaving holes in your policy.
I, I know we did on that one. We talked about bringing it back in one year for review, just because this is an ever-changing, evolving, daily topic, I guess. And I don't think every, anyone has complete answers on, you know, the use of AI in so many different aspects. And, you know, someone mentioned the spell check and so forth. So we did talk about bringing it back for review in one year.
I know. I'm just saying that as someone who's working on AI policy at the college level, if you are thinking of a fishing net and you've got all these different terms that you're using to catch students using things they shouldn't, if LLM isn't in there, you've got a volleyball-sized hole in your net.
Did you review these when they were out there for draft before the Policy Committee to bring that up? Because that would probably be helpful.
I was in California at a National Education Association Conference representing the state that night. So no, I was not here.
But I meant even beforehand, you know.
This is why it would be helpful if committee members or committee meetings were recorded.
It would be helpful ahead of time.
Yeah, having it recorded wouldn't make a difference as to whether we could consider that language or not.
If it was recorded, we would know if it was Neola language, district language, if there was any discussion.
Yeah, it, this is, that was all, any change in that one was entirely from Neola. But, yeah. Again, the LLM did not come up, so.
Yeah, which I'm surprised. If Neola covered NLP, they should have put LLM in there. I mean, it's standard procedure.
Maybe they'll have that in their February.
Well, I appreciate being alerted to that.
Which makes me question what Neola knows about AI, by and large, unfortunately.
Yeah, we question them sometimes on a lot of stuff, but.
One of the other issues I had with 5771, obviously, is the, the language change from gender to sex. But one of the things I know I would like to see added is that if a student's person is searched, one of their parents should be there. I don't believe a student should ever be searched by school officials without having a parent present.
I don't think it's actually legal for us, us administrator to search a student, their personal search. So when we do a search, it's, you know, it would be of materials, but not the person.
So there is language, I'll find it in this never-ending PDF. If we could get these paged out next time, that would be great. 32. All right. So if you look at the language, "Search of a student's person shall be conducted by a person of the student's sex in the presence of another staff member of the same sex and in a manner that is minimally intrusive to the student based on the reasonable suspicion justified in the search." I would like to see that if that person is a minor, a parent must be present, because I know I would not want anyone searching my child if. Because I know I would not want anyone searching my child if I was not there. So I don't know if that would be something the board would be willing to add. Because not only does it protect the student, it protects us from any kind of claims.
Yeah, my understanding is that if the student, and again, this is outside of my, my legal area, but I, my understanding has been that if the student says, hey, can I, can I call my parents? That they have to say, unless he's being detained, yes. So.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I think, I think this is.
I would say my thought would be, if we're going to search a student, you immediately call the parent and let them know that this is going to be happening.
Yeah, I, I go back and forth on that, you know, because, because we're not talking about, this is not a strip search. You know, this is, you know, looking in a pocket. And, you know, again, we're, we're thinking vaping, drugs, that kind of thing. So, I mean, certainly something that can be discussed. I mean, obviously, we'll do whatever the, the board, board would want in that.
Above that green highlighted paragraph, it does say, "Under no circumstances shall a school official ever conduct a strip search against a student."
Yeah, that's not the issue. It's just the search of a student's person. I would hope you would never do a strip search.
See, I, I would like to consider that, because I, I kind of have similar feelings personally. But what I would want to know is, I would want more information about how that would impact any of our processes, whether that might potentially increase our liability. So I, I think it's something that's worthy of further discussion. But I don't think that this is really the right venue for it, because I think we need some prep and some information from the administration. So maybe something that we, we bring forward with some proposed language and then.
And we always have the, we always have the ability to pull it out of this approval rate too and just keep our just policy until the next time. Again, if that's what the board chooses to do.
I know I would be willing to make a motion to approve except for fifty-three thirty, fifty-five oh five, and fifty-seven seventy-one. If.
I'm sorry, Kate, could you repeat that?
So fifty-three thirty, which is the administration of medication and emergency care, fifty-five oh five, which is the academic honesty, and then fifty-seven seventy-one, which is the search and seizure.
My thought on that would be, on fifty, fifty-three thirty, is there, Dr. Clark, is there anything that needs to be, was a Neola change?
Neola change. I mean, I, I haven't heard that our current policy was, was wrong or had issues. Again, that was just a recommendation from Neola.
Okay, so that, okay. And then fifty-five oh five.
Yep, again, that was same thing. We're, we're currently working in an academic honesty policy that, that seems to be working. Those recommendations were from Neola, so certainly can review.
Okay, so it'd be, okay, no urgency there.
Wording was added to that policy around AI and that is a growing change. It would be my opinion that I would rather go forward with what we reviewed in that meeting and then add things on at the next policy committee meeting as needed. But I would be in favor of adding the additional AI language rather than delaying that.
Sure.
I would be willing to accept that if LLM was automatically added.
I think what, what the suggestion is, is go with what Neola gave us now, for now, and then bring back fifty-five oh five for further consideration. Maybe not within a year, but maybe within, maybe at the next policy committee meeting to figure out if we need to, to catch up faster than, than a year. Because I, I agree with, with Elizabeth that we should, we should have that new language in there. But I, I don't like the idea of the volleyball-sized hole. And that's not my area. I'll take your word, your word on it, but it would be worth, again, further discussion. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to delay the rest of what we're doing, so.
I mean, I also can take this back, do a little look and, I mean, we just add, so we could, if we wanted to approve fifty-five oh five tonight, we certainly could do that. I could take a, a look at it again. I mean, I can bring it to next board meeting with the, the updates and then, you know, so we don't even have to wait to the next policy committee meeting if we, if we think that it's an important thing to address, so. But if we want to get the newer AI language in, while it's not complete, we certainly could approve that one tonight and do that.
Well, I'm sure you've all seen the case of the student that's suing the district and we don't want, we don't want loopholes.
And then, yeah, in fifty-seven seventy-one.
Again, search and seizure, we, we have a current policy that we're working fine on. And again, if that's something that we want to look at and do more to, we can not do the updates.
So then, Kate, if you had a, if you could, if you would pull out fifty-three, you would pull out fifty-three thirty, fifty-seven seventy-one with that? Pull those out for further discussion?
I would be fine with that.
Okay, all right. So then why don't you restate your motion?
I'm sorry. I, I'm following everyone. Can I just get clarification, Dr. Clark? Since it's, I, I just want to state first, I did not pull out ten policies, for one. There's a way that we have to talk about these things and a motion was made for all of the policies. Now, I, if I had been quicker, I maybe would have made a different motion and perhaps it would have expedited our process here. With that said, most of the policies that I had questions about have been addressed in our conversation, which I appreciate, which is easier to do at a table from my perspective than via email and more helpful to the public. For policy eight-five-zero-zero, food services, all of that language, is that all Neola?
Yes.
Thank you. For, we covered search and seizure, we covered substance, et cetera. For the meetings, that very first one, are those all Neola changes? Or is that anything that had administrative input or board member input?
I, again, without it in front of me, I don't remember there being, so the original recommendation was Neola. I don't recall, yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Which one was it? It's virtual participation.
Oh, yeah. So no, that was entirely Neola. There is nothing board or discussion about it. It was just to allow the use of virtual discussion, yeah, or virtual meeting, yeah. But yeah, that was entirely Neola.
Okay, thank you. And that, I'm assuming other committee members would share if that's not accurate. So I'm going with that, that is Neola. Thank you. And then I believe there was one other, so let me just double-check this. No, the other one was the one that Kate brought up regarding AI. So not ten policies. Thank you again for your patience as we go through the process here.
So then I would be willing to make a motion to approve policy updates as listed, except for policy fifty-three thirty and policy fifty-seven seventy-one. Those will have further discussion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, I don't think I would vote for that, just because we discussed the fifty-seven seventy-one, discussed that. The curriculum, excuse me, at the policy committee meeting. That whole paragraph was like added about when, so it's on that same page that we were reviewing. And I, it seemed like this was important, like clarification, like an administrator. So, "A request for the search of a student or student's possessions will be directed to the principal or administrator. The administrator should, shall attempt to obtain the freely offered consent in writing, if possible, of the student to the inspection. However, provided there is a reasonable suspicion pursuant to the above paragraphs, a search may be conducted without such consent. Whenever possible, a search will be conducted by the principal in the presence of a student and a staff member." Goes on to say, see, this is important to me. "A search prompted by the reasonable suspicion that health and safety are immediately threatened will be conducted with as much speed and dispatch as may be required to protect persons and properties." So I, I mean, I read this and I thought, well, if Dr. Clark looked at it, this seemed like important details around how do we define if a search ever needs to be done? And it was added by a reason. And I know that Dr. Clark reviewed it. I'm in favor of keeping it in there. We didn't have anyone in our committee at the time raise objections to that. So I'm in favor of leaving that in there. So as, as presented here and not waiting.
So you have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So how many nays? How many, well, actually, how many ayes? Who are ayes? One, two, three? And nays? Okay, that one fails four to three. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I would make a motion to approve as presented.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would support that. I would just want to make sure that we note that we would bring these two up at the next policy committee meeting to discuss in detail.
And I appreciate your questions, Kate and Connie. I think for me, I would just like to make sure we pass what was already discussed and bring back those items for further discussion when we can kind of research those ones that you singled out further at a policy meeting.
Same here. I want to move forward and.
My, my comment would be, by not taking your time on policies that don't immediately need to be updated and rushing forward, you are opening yourselves up to liability. So make sure you think of that when you vote. And there isn't always an opportunity for board members to provide feedback and give guidance on things prior to this meeting right here, so. So it doesn't need to be a rushed process, even if someone doesn't, isn't present at that committee meeting. But right now, you're rushing the vote when we don't need to, because these aren't pressing policies. We have a policy committee, committee process where we review them, we move them forward to this meeting and can have a discussion. We're having it here, but it's not rushed. It's the process that's always been in place. But when you have board members bringing up legitimate concerns that could lead us towards legal liability, we're not pausing, correct? I don't think that keeping one acronym that's under the AI umbrella would likely lead to legal liability, in my personal opinion. So I look forward to bringing that up at the next policy committee. Fifty-three thirty and fifty-seven seventy-one most definitely leave us open to liability. Well, appreciate you bringing your feedback sooner in the future. Thank you.
So I just want to make it really clear here. There is no obligation amongst board members to email other board members or call other board members prior to meetings. As I've mentioned previously, we have a group at this table that do their best to attend every meeting, whether they are a member, an alternate, or not even an alternate. Because in my opinion, we have several individuals that care a great deal about our district. And I think stating over and over again that there's an opportunity to bring things up ahead of time is not helpful. I have the opportunity as a board member, who's not a member of a committee, to share my input at this table so that it is public knowledge. It is given to other board members as I have received feedback from community members, as well as taken the opportunity myself to consider each of these policies. So I would respectfully ask that we be mindful of this language, of continuously saying that there's opportunities for people to do things before meetings. That is not an obligation. Our obligation is to, at this table, share our input prior to making a vote. I will not be voting yes to the motion as it is right now. I greatly appreciate the conversation at this table, rather than anything, any kind of back and forth that would happen prior to committee meetings. That is not, in my view, in the best interest of the public.
So generally, let me just jump in real quick, just because generally the, the committee meetings are, are your working meetings. So we have the, the relevant administration, we might have the Neola rep, we might have a presentation from the, you know, if it's curriculum meeting, the curriculum folks, those are the working meetings. That's where we, where the, the board members and the public's invited, obviously, kind of hash out the details. And what we, we try to not do, I think the reason we, that's structured this way, I didn't structure it this way, this is the way it's always been, is to, you know, kind of have the, you know, have some, you know, this meeting is, is the, the regular school board meetings, the, the, the meeting where we have, you know, the, the public comment, we have the administration, our administrators are here, the public. So we, we try to be respectful at the time. And so I, I don't know if this is what people mean, but in my, in my experience, it's more helpful to have the, the, kind of what I'll call the nuts and bolts discussions at the committee level.
And that's wonderful when everyone can attend. That, that's really what it comes down to. That's not always possible. And once again, I would reiterate, we have individuals at this table who attend meetings who are not committee members, who are not alternates, because they value each other's time when we get to the general meetings, okay? That's really what it comes down to. I, I don't have more to add. I appreciate the discussion. I, I'm happy to move forward.
I guess I would just add, I don't think anyone's advocating to have discussions with other committee members. I mean, we do have to abide by open meeting laws, but I guess I, the committee meetings are very important, but I do understand I can't make every committee meeting. I don't think anyone on this board can. But I think Jaredon is pretty open. If we do see something to, you know, contact him and say, I have a question on this. And he's pretty good, I think, about educating each board member individually. So I think that would help us come into these board meetings. And we can discuss it and we should discuss it, but we're a little more prepared to discuss it. You know, especially these policies, they're very detailed. And to just be sitting up here and changing things at the last minute, I find that difficult. So that's just what I, my opinion on this is.
Thank you, Laura. To be clear, these are all items that I discussed with our superintendent. And if it was possible for me to attend a policy committee meeting, which I am not a member of, in order to sit and share these thoughts at that time, I would have. My opportunity to do, to share my concerns is here at this table prior to a vote. That is all I am trying to communicate.
And so the public is aware, committee meetings are not recorded unless I'm there, which is why I record committee meetings, so that people can be aware of what's happening, they can be referenced. Because if you've looked at committee meeting minutes, they are very bare bones and do not provide an explanation of conversations that were had in those committee meetings. So for board members who were not in attendance, unless you break quorum by going and asking all of your fellow board members what happened, you do have no idea as to what discussion ensued. You only know who brought the meeting to order, closed it, and made motions.
Unless you look at board docs and, and the presentations that are presented. But we're getting off track. So we have a, a motion and a second on the policy updates. Is there any further discussion on the policy updates?
Can you refresh me what exactly the motion was, where we're at?
The motion is to approve the policy updates as presented, I believe.
Did we have that or not? I thought we just voted. We're in discussion. Okay.
I believe we're. To approve as presented, right?
And this was with the understanding that we would revisit fifty-seven seventy-one and fifty-three thirty at the next policy committee meeting?
That wasn't included in the motion.
It's not.
It's not, but you could add it.
Would we add that?
Well, actually, we, we might.
The motion has to be voted down and then a new one has to be made.
The issue, the issue is, we might not want to wait till the next policy committee meeting. If there's a volleyball-sized hole in the, I, I expect Jaredon's going to probably do some, make some calls tomorrow and find, find out, you know, get some information. And we might see that at the next meeting, would be, the next meeting would be my guess, if that's an issue and.
But the others, they're.
But yeah, so. So that's it. We have the motion and the, and the second. Is there further discussion?
To clarify, the motion and the second is to approve as presented, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
She carries five to two. Thank you.
All right. The next recommendation is for the board to approve Wisconsin Guaranteed Admission Program Resolution as presented. That's in your packet. This resolution will allow the district to submit a DPI waiver, which describes the tie-breaking aspect of policy fifty-four fifty-one point zero-three that was just. tie-breaking aspect of policy fifty-four-fifty-one point zero-three that was just approved. This recommendation is being forwarded by the policy committee.
So they entertain a motion to approve the Guaranteed Admission Program Resolution.
A move to approve the Wisconsin Guaranteed Admission Program Resolution as presented?
I will second.
Motion and a second, is there further discussion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, next, we are looking for a recommendation to approve the district school safety plans as presented. Board policy eighty-four-twenty states that each school's safety plan is reviewed and approved annually by the board. This recommendation is being forwarded by the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
I motion to approve the district school safety plans as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
The last recommendation this evening is for the acceptance of donations to the district. This month, there were six donations, two thousand dollars from SF, excuse me, pardon me, two thousand dollars from SFM Mutual Insurance Company to support the Buildings and Grounds Department, ten thousand dollars from Randall Growth to support CHS robotics, a two thousand eleven GMC Yukon Denali valued at six thousand six hundred dollars from Richard Johannes of RJ Plowing, this will support the CHS Autos program, two thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars from the Thorson PTO to purchase Amplify Extension Resources for kindergarten. These items were originally included in the Amplify Materials approved in the spring, but were not able to be included in the budget. Fifty-eight thousand five hundred nine dollars and forty-six cents from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club to support CHS Athletics, and three thousand dollars from the Parkview PTO to support student engagement resources. If the board approves all of these donations, the total donation for October will be seventy-three thousand fifty-three dollars and forty-six cents, with the total approved donations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year of one hundred twelve thousand dollars, six hundred, one hundred twelve thousand, six hundred eighty, fifty-eight dollars, excuse me, and forty-six cents.
Just to clarify, I, I thought I heard you say that the CHS Athletic Booster Club donation was fifty-eight thousand?
Oh, I'm, I must be struggling with numbers, forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand.
Five hundred and nine dollars and forty-six cents?
Yes.
I apologize for that.
I have a question on number five, what exactly are the extension resources for kindergarten?
Uh, Ms. Ruta Tool, sure.
I have the same question, so thank you for asking.
So first, kindergarten, some of their extension activities were going to be different kinds of, I guess I would say, center-based activities that go along with the curriculum in Amplify, so it's not all Ampli, it's Amplify-related, it's not directly a part of Amplify, so there were items like tents and different kinds of manipulatives to have different kinds of centers in the kindergarten classroom that would extend what they are talking about within their Amplify curriculum.
Okay, so those, to clarify, are not any trade books that would be used in extensions?
No.
Okay, good.
It's physical.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Ellie, and I assume that the kindergarten teachers who piloted Amplify had feedback on this and think that they thought would improve the experience this year?
This was in, this was one of the first conversations I had in July, so there was some immediate feedback this summer.
All right, further questions?
I guess I just have one question, is there any talk of that for the other schools as well, if they feel it's so valuable?
So I know that there's a lot of conversation that's taking place right now, because within Amplify, some of, at the end of their units, there are culminating activities, and that has started to pop up quite a bit, and there has been initial conversations about what we might need to do to support some of those culminating activities, so that is an initial conversation we've started to have.
And that actually is what the Parkview PTO donation is about, too. They just called it engagement resources, but they, those are the end-of-the-unit activities.
Wonderful that they're able to contribute and provide that, just given how big of an investment the whole Amplify curriculum was, that to cover extras and add-ons like this is wonderful.
Much appreciated. Do we have a motion on the donations?
All motion.
I will second.
Motion is to accept the donations.
Thank you, to approve as presented.
Okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Clark, for walking us through those numerous recommendations.
Sure.
Committee reports, I'm assuming we covered all this stuff in our prior section, but let's start with buildings, oh, I guess maybe not, Buildings and Grounds, Kate, that's all.
So on September twenty-fifth, we held a Building and Grounds Committee meeting, topics we covered were the grounds updates from work done over the summer, and this included trimming and removing trees from the CHS courtyard, reseeding a field at Thorson, and removal of brush at Webster. Also at that meeting, we discussed, we discussed some parking lot updates, there was installation of sidewalk access ramps at Parkview, and some repairs done in all lots, some spot repairs, and then, in addition, there was some summer work at various buildings, we had roof maintenance, a door at Thorson, lighting at Webster, and all of this did come onto the B and G budget, which was fantastic. There was some information about a CHS air handling system, two of the four stages are not currently working, and we're in the process of getting some estimates to, you know, start addressing that, which is good, because we're about nine months out from getting parts on that. And then the last item was discussion of the school's safety plan that we did vote on tonight.
All right, thank you. Curriculum, Elizabeth Schaller.
Yeah, we met on October second, I had quite a full agenda, some of them, we voted on these items today, so we discussed the half-credit personal finance course, which we voted on this evening, the Global Scholars Trip for June of twenty-six, we had the gap German trip on the agenda, we'll briefly discuss it, it's an exchange program, they presented here before, we'll get a bigger update at the next meeting. We discussed new AP Psych textbook, the AP did an audit, and our current textbook is more than ten years out of date, so looking at getting the newer, the newest edition of the textbook that's already used, so we'll be reviewing that at the, at the next meeting. Got an overview of Webster Home Room and Paw Time, and just making sure that that curriculum goes through the committee as appropriate with our curriculum review cycle, and discussed the English pilot done at the high school for ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, and we look forward to having some of the English teachers from the high school present at our next meeting for a bigger update. And finally, had a really good discussion on the GED option two, we voted on it pretty quickly here, but a lot of thought and planning went out into having an option for these students needing an alternative program to do something here within the high school, rather than going out to the alternative high school, and happy to see that pass today. And our next meeting is November sixth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, thank you. Policy committee meeting, that was on October nine, we just simply went through the policy, the policies that we just voted on in the update, it was a pretty short meeting, the Neola rep was there, and passed, passed the changes up to the board, and we just approved them, so that's about it. Personnel and Finance, Kate, that's all.
So on Wednesday, October sixteenth, we had a Personnel and Finance Committee meeting, a lot of the topics we covered, we did vote on tonight, such as the health insurance renewal, the tax levy, the original budget, and the part-time custodian wage increase. The one item, in addition to that, that we discussed was elimination of the early release days for next school year, there was some discussion that time could be better spent lumping those all into one day versus spreading them out and, and having teachers have like an hour of professional development, so, in addition to that, we have a future meeting date of January eighth.
And I just want to add in there, that, that vote will come when the board votes on calendar, which will be presented to the board in the November meeting, so there won't be a separate vote on early release days, it'll be part of the, the calendar that the board selects for next school year.
All right, thank you, Kate, thank you, Dr. Clark, that leads to item number eight, which would be the entertainment of a motion to adjourn.
So moving.
Do we have a second? There's a motion and a second?
I motion. A good old fan kicked in.
I think Dr. Savaji seconded, okay, a motion and a second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Another unanimous, unanimous motion passes, thank you, everybody.